7th, 2011. I'd encourage everyone to join with council in singing our national anthem.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Well, thank you to the National Film Board of Canada for the images of our country and to Mr. David Bray for the musical rendition of our anthem. So we'll start the meeting with the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Can I have a motion for that set of minutes? Counselor Wong?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move the minutes of the city council meeting held June 13, 2011 be adopted.
Thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Did anyone notice any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Wong, would you do that second set of minutes?
Yes, I'll also move that the minutes of the special city council meeting held June 21st, 2011 be adopted.
Thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. That will bring us to the adoption of the agenda and Counselor Kogan.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I move council adopt the agenda as presented with the additions of tender T-23436-11, the Dave Bar Community Centre, and we'll put that on business 9.8. And one further addition, the city logo slogan launch, put that on as number 9.9.
Great, thank you very much, Counselor Kogan. Were there any other additions or changes to the agenda? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you, and that motion carries. So that brings us to the delegation portion of our meeting, and unless any of those media members are going to come forward, this is the opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward and speak to council. This is open to any member of the public to speak to council about any burning issue. And seeing nobody come forward, we'll move on to our public hearings, of which we have none. But we do have some unfinished business, and I wonder if on bylaw C-1166A to amend the traffic bylaw, could I look for a motion for third reading? Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'll move that council give bylaw C-1166A to amend the traffic bylaw, third reading.
Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. So, third reading is open for discussion and debate, and I see Counselor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I guess what I'd like to do is fly or seek guidance of council with respect to how we proceed. We could proceed and have the vote on third reading, and that will determine the will of council. Another alternative that I have, I guess I've prepared, that if there's an interest in council, we might want to proceed, is I would make an amending motion that the bylaw be amended to delete section eight, which would be the reference to RV parking. So we would then be left with housekeeping, what are they, schedules, and pay by space. So we could deal with that tonight. And then, following that, if that was successful, that motion, then I would move that we refer the RV parking in residential districts be referred back to Protective Services for further discussion before bringing it back. So those are kind of two suggestions or two alternatives we might have. I'd be interested in council's or councils' at with respect to how we proceed tonight.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. So if I understand it, then you're saying that there's a number of issues in here that really haven't been a part of the discussion or debate, and what you're suggesting is maybe those could go forward if council's interested in looking at the RV parking issue even more in depth at a committee level. Okay.
Or proceed with third reading today.
Okay, okay. So I do see some folks in the queue that have some opinions on that, perhaps? Counselor Wong?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I would be in support of Counselor Radburn's direction to deal with this bylaw excluding the RV parking, because obviously we have more to discuss on that before it can come forward to city council. And I believe that if we had a chance to discuss it at committee, that we would come to a more or a closer consensus, anyway.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Counselor McLean?
Oh, thank you, Mayor Given. I just want to know Counselor Radburn's why he wants to go back to committee. I thought it was pretty amended well and spoke well last council to go forward, so I'd like to understand why he wants to discuss it more. I think we discussed a lot last council, so I just, I don't see no reason.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Counselor Radburn, you have to turn your microphone on yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Counselor McCain, I put both options out on the table. My interest is that maybe we can find something that, as Alderman Wong or Counselor Wong suggested, maybe there's something that we can find greater consensus if we tweaked the RV parking part of the bylaw. That's it.
Okay, thanks very much. Thanks very much, Counselor Reverend. I see Counselor Kogan?
Thanks, Mayor Given. No, I wouldn't have been in favor of passing this on third reading. I kind of thought that the other amendment that had brought in with the 48 hours was, I thought it was adequate. I'm not against it coming back to committee, because that is where a lot of the council's good work is done. So I will support the motion that this goes back to committee, even though it may not change from where it is right now, but I will support that.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Kogan. Counselor Toole?
Yes, I agree with Counselor Radburn that I think there's still some uncertainties out there in regards to the RV regulations, and I think it still needs to go back to Protective Services Committee.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Toole, and Counselor Monroe.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Just to speak to this a little bit more, I guess, as the, one of the people that, or the person, I guess, that made all the amendments last time, had plenty of time to think about this, and I would have to agree with Counselor Radburn that I think that maybe because it wasn't, there was a lot of varying opinions out there, that perhaps maybe the best thing would be to send it back to committee and make sure that we get it right before we pass this.
Okay, so it sounds like there is some opinions out there, and so Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Then I will move that bylaw C-1166A be amended to delete section eight.
Okay, and so your motion essentially deletes section eight from third reading, and the effect of that would be that we'd have third reading on everything except for the provisions around RV parking. And then, Counselor Radburn, was your intent to follow that up with another portion to refer that back to committee?
If this motion is passed, then I'll have the subsequent.
Okay, okay. So we have a motion to amend third reading to delete section eight, the RV parking section. That motion's in order and open it up for discussion or debate, if any. Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries with one opposed. Counselor Radburn, you said you had a, oh, sorry, excuse me.
Third reading amended.
Yeah, excuse me. So we'll continue on with the vote on third reading as amended. So this is the vote on third reading of the traffic bylaw with all the stuff other than the stuff we were talking about last time on RVs. Any discussion or debate on the traffic bylaw as amended? It's you amended Counselor Monroe's motion. It's on the floor already, on the table. Okay? Any discussion or debate on third reading as amended? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you, that motion carries. Counselor Radburn, any further business?
Thank you. I would move that the matter of recreational vehicle parking in residential districts be referred to the Protective Services Committee for further discussion.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. So we have a motion to refer that section back to the Protective Services Committee. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, one opposed. Okay, thank you very much, everybody. So we'll move on to the reports section, on which we have none, and that takes us right into committee business, and starting off with the Municipal Government Day team. Counselor McLean, I believe that was your committee?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would like to recommend that council receive the minutes of Municipal Government Day team meeting held June 8, 2011. And with that said, I will vote.
Sure, yeah, we'll just do the motion there, and then if there's any additional details you want to follow up. So we'll vote on the motion to receive the minutes from the June 8 meeting? Did anyone notice any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor McLean, is there anything you wanted to highlight from Municipal Government Day?
Yes, I do, Mayor Given. Thank you very much. The 10th Annual Municipal Government Day event was held on June 15 and was another successful celebration. The theme for this year's event was "Get Active," and I thought that went over quite well with the municipal Olympics and the rest of the community involved. Despite the weather, everyone seemed to enjoy the day. Attendance was way lower than before, last year. We served between 1,300 and 1,400 hamburgers and hot dogs compared to around 4,000 last year. And it wasn't just the rain, it was, there was a hockey game that day, and there was other results. The quality of this year's event was extremely high. We had outstanding displays of city departments and current projects, great entertainment from talented employees, delicious food, exceptional service by city staff, an amazing contest, and a fun, amazing race challenge with our regional municipalities. It took a huge effort to plan and carry out all the activities that took place throughout the day. Thank you to all those involved in hosting this event, whether it's part of your regular workday or as a volunteer taking on some extra work. To my council colleagues, thank you for participaction, and I hope you enjoy the Municipal Government Day as much as I did, and I was, I look forward to hopefully maybe help the next year. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. And I just want to offer my congratulations to you and the team. Fantastic job, and I think despite the challenging conditions and the rain, everybody performed pretty admirably, and goes to show that we've got a pretty flexible group of people that can put their heads together. You might even say that our resourceful spirit came shining through once again. Congratulations, Counselor McLean. So that brings us to item 9.2, Council Committee, the whole. Can I have a motion for that set of minutes? Counselor Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'll move that council receive the minutes of the council committee of the whole meeting held June 13, 2011.
Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. Any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you, and that motion carries. And that'll bring us to the Public Works Committee from June 14, and I believe Counselor Wong, that was you.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes of the Public Works Committee meeting held June 14, 2011.
Thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you, and that motion carries. Counselor Wong?
I move that council extend the tender T-25-546-10, the 2010 asphalt maintenance contract to Wapiti gravel suppliers limited, in the amount of $121,284 excluding GST for the 2011 maintenance season. And in speaking to this, this is just an extension of last year's contract with a minor increase, I think it's an 8% increase, over last year's price, which administration feels is still well below what they would have to pay this year had, if they were to go out and re-tender it.
Thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. And that motion carries. Counselor Wong?
I move that council approve the downtown enhancement plan terms of reference.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Any discussion or debate on the terms of reference as presented? Seeing none, Counselor Wong?
I guess I should have maybe given council just a little introduction that the last time, the downtown enhancement plan was reviewed was 2004, so now it's a good time to bring up that plan and see where it can be updated. Grand Prairie has definitely seen its share of development since then, and it's time to look at this plan and see how we can more, more better integrate some of the changes that have occurred.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Wong, was there anything else from that set of minutes?
I guess the only thing I really want to highlight is that administration presented a report on boarded up structures, and a council received their report for information. Basically, at this point, administration is going to work on a policy that they can use for dealing with boarded up structures that are kept in disrepair. There is now legal precedence in Alberta that municipalities have used, or that, yeah, where municipalities basically gone in and have taken additional steps to try to get the homeowners to bring their property into more aesthetic, I guess, light, and if that were to fail, we can go anywhere from creating an order for them, to force them to do that, or if it really comes down to push and shove, the municipality could come in, bulldoze the property, and charge it back to the owner. So we're at this stage now where we're just going to look at what the city of Grand Prairie policy is going to be, and that'll come back to a future meeting.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Wong. So we'll move on to the General Government Services Committee meeting, and Counselor Gustafson, can you take that, as Counselor Rice isn't here?
You betcha. Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council receive the minutes of the General Government Services Committee meeting held June 15, 2011.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Anyone notice any errors or omissions? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council receive the unaudited financial statements for the three-month period ending March 31, 2011 for information.
Thank you. Any discussion on those financial statements? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Was there anything else from that set of minutes, Counselor Gustafson?
Just like to highlight the internet voting business case that we are moving forward with to see if we can, see if we can be the first guys to spearhead the internet voting system in the province of Alberta, and I'd really like to see that go through as we're a city, leading city in lots of other initiatives. It'd be nice to, nice to do that one as well, so thanks, Mayor Given, for bringing that forward. And that's all that I have for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I think that brings us to the Protective Services Committee from June 21, and Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council receive the minutes of the Protective Services Committee meeting held June 21, 2011.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Did anyone notice any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you, and that motion carries. Counselor Radburn, was there anything that you cared to highlight?
Three or four things, if I might, Mayor Given. We did have a delegation from the Grand Prairie Firefighters Foundation, Charity Foundation, and they're, they spoke about a Dogs with Wings fundraiser, which is a 24-hour stationary rowing event to support awareness for autism and the availability of dogs, dog assistance. It's August 20, and so we can become involved by rowing or spectatoring. So each of us will make that determination. Secondly, we did receive a delegation from the All the Rage Tattoo and Piercing, and they are seeking or asking us to explore changes to the business license bylaw, and so that has been sent to administration for a report. Also, committee gave admin direction to proceed with a public process for naming options for the third fire hall. So try to engage the community, but we put in options because at the end of the day, it is council's decision as to what name we choose. And finally, with respect to city staff facility parking, we've just chose to, at this point, leave it with administration to deal with facility, with parking facility by facility. And, but we've also asked administration to review costs associated with offering free transit passes to city employees to encourage, I guess, less use of vehicles, so that we're modeling a greener community. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. So we'll move on to the Community Development Committee for June 21, and Counselor Gustafson, I believe that was you?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council receive the minutes of the Community Development Committee meeting held June 21, 2011.
Thank you. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you, and that motion carries. Counselor Gustafson?
Thank you. I'll move that council support the $30,000 Alberta Regional Collaboration Program grant application submitted by the County of Grand Prairie, and also supports the County of Grand Prairie being the project manager for the grant.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Counselor Wong?
I just want to say that I'm really pleased to see this come forward to our council. This is just simply a formal support from the city of Grand Prairie to, actually, the Wapiti Corridor Planning Society. The County of Grand Prairie is taking the lead in helping coordinate this project, but really, the Wapiti Corridor Planning Society is a stakeholder group with government members on its board of directors. I'm really pleased to see this go forward because stakeholder engagement, which is what the money, the grant money is going to be used for, ends up costing a lot more than what people think. Every time you have a public open house, you have to advertise it, you need a meeting room and all that, and it is starting to eat away at the budget, so it's really nice to see our support on this end.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Counselor Kogan?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I too, I support that, but they're just, I've had a couple of comments from people in the county saying that they're just not exactly sure of which way the county seems to be moving everything east and not more west, and I said, it's, they've just started now, so I want that to be just kept in, in as part of the collaborative program, so I think it's a good initiative.
Okay, thanks very much. Counselor Kogan, any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Thanks for all your hard work there, Alderman Wong. Councils, I'll move that council support that the $30,000 obtained from the Alberta Regional Collaboration Program grant will be used in the public consultation activities involving the Wapiti Corridor Plan.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Any further discussion, any discussion or debate on that motion? I see Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Bill Given. I know the question relate to Counselor Wong. I believe it's a good plan, the Wapiti Corridor Plan, but like most residents of Grand Prairie, we're not sure it's all detailed, and there's quite a few sections in there. There's four or five sections planned A, B, C, D, and we're restricted for 30, 50 years going north, and this plan is to the south. And when this comes through, is a lot of this land going to become reserved, and then it can't be developed on, and the city can grow a little bit themselves, so they restrict us just east or west. A lot of residents, some residents want to know this.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor McLean. I see Counselor Monroe in the queue.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Counselor Gustafson, is there any kind of timeline as to when they can expect to receive that grant, or?
Counselor Gustafson, do you have any idea on that?
I don't recall a timeline, Gary.
I wonder if maybe Counselor Wong, as the city's rep on the Wapiti Corridor Planning, would have a little bit of insight to that or any of the other issues. Counselor Wong?
Well, I believe the grant was applied for in January, and we're expected to get it sometime later this year. It's forward to the provincial government right now to make a decision on it. So we'll, yeah, I don't know the exact date, but, you know, any kind of letter of support that we could provide is going to help speed that along. In response to Counselor McLean's question about restricting development, the Wapiti Corridor Plan is mainly to set up a framework for public lands, so 97%, something like that, 97% of the land is crown land, and what we're trying to do is we're just trying to create some kind of order behind the use of this crown land, because right now, anything goes. Because it is public land, you get hunters on there, you get ATV years, you get hikers, horseback riders, and all that, and the idea is just to create a plan that's going to avoid a lot of the conflict, so it doesn't have anything to do with development or how the city is going to grow, because, quite honestly, this land is still, it's still controlled by SRD, Sustainable Resource Development, so if the city were to make an application to get some of that land, we would still have to follow the exact same process as we normally would. And the other thing about this plan, too, is we're not trying to take away anyone's rights to anything in the land. What we're trying to do is just trying to organize it a little bit.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Gustafson?
Thank you. I'll move that council approve, I'll move that council approve revised policy 201 recreation fees and charges effective January 1, 2012, to December 31, 2014, as presented in Schedule A, excluding multiplex drop-in rates and non-pool rental rates.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. I see Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would propose an amendment to the motion. That amendment would be that the pool youth user group, the group non, for the pool youth user group, in terms of ice rentals, the group non-adult and the group junior hockey, and the soccer youth rates be, take effect instead of January 1, take effect April 1, 2012, 2013, and 2014. So that would be the amendment, and if it's in order, I would speak to it, Mayor Given.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Yes, I'd rule that motion in order, essentially just changing the effective dates on those four specific classes of rates. If you want to speak to the motion?
Thank you. I understand the reality that we have to move forward with getting our rates more comparable with other municipalities. However, the youth, minor soccer, minor swimming, swimming and minor hockey have, part of their season is both fall and, fall and winter. So for those groups, they are hit with a double whammy with the January 1. They get an increased, for example, they get an increase this year, and they get an increase January 1 before their season, winter swimming, indoor soccer, or hockey is completed. So this, I guess, cushions the increase a little bit without affecting our revenue in the long haul, but it gives them a little bit of flexibility with respect to their budgets. The other reality is that some, I know at least one of these groups have already budgeted and have established registration fees, so I know that the double whammy will affect them. Others are in the process and would give them a circumstance where they wouldn't have to have the double increase over a season of play.
Okay.
That's my thinking.
Okay, thanks very much. So we're on the motion to amend the pool youth user group, ice rental group non-adult, ice rental group junior hockey, and soccer pitch youth rates. Is that, is that accurate? Okay. And so discussion or debate on that motion to amend? Counselor Gustafson?
So how I understand it, Alderman, is there will virtually be no financial change in the rates or anything, it'll just be the timing of when these, when these groups are charged so that they can budget better and plan their season better for their regular season, as it's not a fiscal year like this for the, is that correct? Thank you. I'll be supporting the motion.
Okay, any further discussion or debate? Okay. Any further discussion or debate? And just to be clear, Counselor Radburn, did you say a date in April? Did you say April, April 1?
April 1.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. So the, we're back to the main motion as amended, which Counselor Gustafson made, and so it will be policy 201 recreation fees and charges, just with the differential effective dates. So the majority of the rates will be effective January 1st, 2012, where those four specified groups will be effective April 1st, 2012. So discussion and debate on the main motion, and Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Bill Given. The question I had about it says, excluding multiplex drop-in rates and non-pool rental rates, I just want to clarify if I have to make an amendment or not, does that include the yearly family rates with that as well? Because if we vote on this, would that be set that the yearly family rates will go as they save from 900 to 1600 over a few years? That's what I'd like to know.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. I think the intent of the committee was to have all of the multiplex rates go to a discussion around the multiplex business plan. The only one that are included, actually if you look at the sheets that are in the council package, the only rates related to the multiplex that I see, if I'm reading it correctly, are the pool rates for swim clubs.
Okay.
So there aren't, there aren't yearly membership rates or any of those included in this, in this motion. So essentially what this does is ensure that the user groups, the pool user groups, understand what the rates are going to be at the multiplex, so they can do their planning, kind of like Counselor Radburn.
And this has nothing to do with family. That's why I make sure. Okay, the rates, yearly rates.
Yeah.
Good. Look forward to it.
Okay. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Okay. Counselor Gustafson?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Bill.
Counselor Gustafson? Gotcha.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council approve the 10-year lease agreement for operating space at the multiplex facility to the Prana Swim Club with a five-year option to renew.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Counselor Wong?
I just want to say this is a good news story. We're able to rent out some space at the multiplex to a, to a swim club, which is a community group that really needs some office space in the multiplex, because you know, they offer such a large program, a good diverse program for our youth. And to not have them in there would really be detrimental to, to their program. But also, you know, we're getting this at pretty much market value, which is, you know, it's good for our bottom line.
Thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Also, too, just note that the, the space that's being proposed is actually a, a larger space that was a little bit bigger than what the Pranas would need. And, but we were having a little bit of difficulty finding a lease use for it. And so this basically makes that into a smaller office space for the Pranas and a meeting room space, which we'll be able to rent out separately and generates some revenue as well. So, okay. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I will declare conflict of interest as my family's involvement with Ernie's Sports Experts. So I'll vacate.
Okay. Thanks very much. Counselor Radburn declares a conflict of interest on item 9.6.4 and has left the council chambers. Counselor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council approve a five-year lease agreement for operating space at the multiplex facility to Ernie's Sports Expert with a three to five-year option to renew.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. If I can, just to clarify, I think that was actually three by five. So it's actually three five-year options. Is that correct for, for the Director of Community Services?
Yes, Your Worship, that is correct.
Okay. Thanks very much. So let's just, so everybody's on the same page. It's actually a, a five-year lease with three terms of additional five years that they can renew. Okay. Discussion debate? Counselor Wong?
I just wanted to say that I support this motion. This is another good news story. They're, they're taking two out of the five retail spaces that are available at the multiplex. And not only that, but having a company like Ernie's Sports Experts who can offer a wide assortment of sporting goods to meet all the user groups' needs makes this, or works really well with our multiplex, because it offers basically a full service sporting goods facility for our, for our residents of Grand Prairie.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Could we call back in? Counselor Radburn? And we'll move on to item 9.6.5. Counselor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council approve gift and kind sponsorship, including waiver of fees and charges to access to facilities and transit for the Grade III Reading University Program and provide gift and kind information via email to council.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. So this is in relation to a request that came forward at the previous council meeting and essentially says that we'll waive any fees or charges for access to any city facility as well as transit for this program. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Counselor O'Toole?
Yes, just wondering if there was, thank you, Mayor Given. I was just wondering if there was a value associated with this gift and kind at present?
Okay. So for administration, does anybody care to give us a little bit of information on the projected value of this gift and kind? Director of Community Services?
Your Worship, the value, of course, is going to change depending upon how many services are encountered. Certainly Transit has already indicated about, approximately about $500 just from Transit alone. Use of other facilities will certainly increase with, as users are using those.
Okay. Okay. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
And, and that note is that the council will get a follow-up with further detail on what the contribution was for this year. Okay. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Counselor Radburn?
I just, I'm really pleased with this motion. I think it is, it gets us a little bit separate from the quagmire of sponsorship and sponsorship budgets, provides some gift and kind support that I think will be very valuable to the program. So I will certainly be supporting this motion.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Further discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Gustafson, was there anything else from that set of minutes?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. Now, we had some, four delegations at the meeting. There was Pace there, give us some information, Sunrise House. Grand Prairie Youth Council was there, thanking us for their, for supporting their recent youth, youth week. And of course, the Wapiti Corridor Planning Society was there with lots of information about their, their organization. And we discussed fencing of the, between the Grand Prairie College and the Rotary, Rotary Campground to come back for a further report. And that's all. If I, happy to entertain any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Counselor Gustafson? Seeing none, then we move on to the Combative Sports Commissioner from June 22nd, and Counselor Wong?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes of the Combative Sports Commission meeting held June 22nd, 2011.
Thanks very much. Were there any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And Counselor Wong, anything to highlight in that set of minutes?
I just wanted to point out that the commission approved the next combative sports event for October 15th later this year. And it was, the application was made up by the same promoters as last time, Evolution Fighting Championship. They indicated that they had a great experience working with the city, the commission and with the Crystal Center. We had a debrief with the Crystal Center. They also had a similar opinion that they had a great time working with Evolution Fighting Championship. And, you know, after debriefing with everyone that was involved, from RCMP to, to security staff and everyone else, we saw no reason to hold back an application for another event. And, you know, we supported it. And we look forward to October 15th, when the next event will be at the Crystal Center.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Sorry, we voted on that set of minutes. Thank you. That'll bring us to item 9.8, one of our additions, and that was the award of tender T-23-436-11 for construction work at the Dave Bar Community Center. Can I have a motion for that from council? Counselor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council award tender T-23-436-11 for the general construction work to the Dave Bar Community Center in the amount of $1,329,000, excluding GST, to GenCall Construction as the lowest bid meeting specifications.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. And that would bring us to item 9.9, the city's slogan and logo. Can I have a motion from council? Counselor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council approve resourceful spirit, growing opportunity, as the city's, city slogan in the word marked graphic.
Thank you very much, Counselor Gustafson. I appreciate your emphasis on some of those particular words. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Counselor Wong?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I, I'm going to support this motion. The city's gone through quite a process of coming up to this, this slogan and as well as the logo that's introduced with it. I believe that we had many, many opportunities for the public to get involved in the process. And this final result is the culmination of all that public input. And I believe that we need to honor that process and, and vote in favor of pushing this through.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Any further discussion or debate? Counselor O'Toole?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I also support this new logo slogan launch. I know that in the past years, it's been quite difficult to come up with something that means something to everybody in this community. And I, with our debate over the last six months or so, I think this is what we've, we're pretty happy with. I'm happy with this.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. And just on that, I'd like to thank everyone in administration, the public and the City of Grand Prairie Brand Alliance Group, who worked through with the previous council and this council to come up with something that would represent our community well going into the future. I think ultimately, we have a result that speaks in different ways to different people, but ultimately really speaks to the heart and spirit of our community. And so I think it's very accurate in that sense. And I'm looking forward to moving on and seeing it in the city's marketing materials over time and the city's new website, which will launch sometime this fall. So I'm glad to see all the work that can come now that we have this finalized. And I'd like to extend my congratulations to David Olinger, City's Marketing Communications Manager, who had handled this and shepherded it through from day one. Thanks very much for all your hard work. And so that brings us to correspondence, of which we had none, delegation business, of which we had none today, notice of motion, which we had none, and council member reports. Counselor McLean, you had Community Futures of Grand Prairie and Region. Would you like to do that report?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yes, just to report something, the Community Futures, I reported before about the youth connection being canceled by provincial government. But they're, they're looking at something that the city are, grant applications and having maybe a full-time staff member for people in the community to go for grants, profit or nonprofit. And I think we already donate about $10,000 in that area, same with the County of Grand Prairie and the Town of Whammy donates money. And they're looking at maybe, this could be a major area in the area for people to go get grants. It could be seniors for housing and try to redirect it a different way. And a lot of people don't know where to go. So they're looking at this avenue, and I think if it does come about, it could be something very good for our community. And I'll be more to tell about it, hopefully in a couple councils.
That's great. Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Counselor Radburn, you had Grand Spirit Foundation?
I do. Thank you, Mayor Given. Yes, three things relative to the Grand Spirit Foundation Management Committee meeting of June 17th. New seniors band partnership with the City of Grand Prairie, the bid was selected. Delivery is in three to four months. Would like to thank Frank and Audra and Dwayne, I believe, for helping work with Brian Hillby and the Grand Spirit Foundation to, to this point. Also, Alberta Senior Citizens Housing Association had a consultation recently and talked about some issues such as a gray area between lodge program and health and where lodges fit in that continuum of care, the antiquated system of funding. Right now, we just have the LAP grant, which is Lodge Assistance Program, that certainly we need more than that support. And aging infrastructure and inappropriate design and size. So I think over time, we have new disease, new needs, new designs required, and hopefully on a go-forward basis, we'll be able to do that. And finally, we looked at the ASHA membership fee review and found that at this point, we're still remaining a part of that organization. Thank you.
That's great. Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Counselor O'Toole, I believe you had library board for us.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. On June 14th, we had the library meeting, and some of the topics that were brought up were Geek Day that we had earlier in June. And it was basically members of Grand Prairie, whether they're businessmen, teachers, just public at large, that have interests other than their profession. And they read books, talked a little bit about, or showed books and talked a little bit about their hobbies, you might say. So there was everything there from electricians to cake decorating. Also, just to let you know that there's all kinds of programs being put on this summer at the library. They include programs for adults, teens, children, and they're starting registration now and going through the summer. Another topic to come up was the outdoor sign. I know a number of people met from both the city and the library to talk about options and placement. So we're hoping in the future that we'll have a sign outdoors and also some signage indoors as well, separate the library from the art gallery and that sort of thing. And we've been in touch with the Slave Lake Library, and we're going to try and help them out, both the Peace Library System and the Grand Prairie Library, to get them, once we get an established place out in Slave Lake, to get their library going. And we're going to support them as much as we can.
That's great. Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Radburn, I believe you had Multiplex Building Committee?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a few updates relative to the project. Construction costs were 81.73% expended or completed, however you want to look at it. Here are some of the updates. Basketball hoops were being installed on the gym wall on Friday. There's a good news story for basketball. Floor tile on the main concourse and stairs is 65% complete. The wayfinding using arches of color to the front counter and elevator look great. Drywall is mostly complete and painting is at 85%. Adult hot tub is tiled and working on the family tub. Aquatera inspection is scheduled for Tuesday. We'll have water meter by the end of the week, and we'll be doing fire alarm verification July 5th. Paved the trench in front of the gymnas last week. We begin sidewalks on the west side in two to three weeks. 8,000 to 34,000 square foot of pool deck is complete, and theming and lockers start to go up in a week. So thank you to Kylie for that update.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. I believe that was all the council member reports that we had from agencies, boards and commissions, unless there was anything else. And Counselor Radburn, since you were last on there, would you mind starting for us on council roundtable?
Not at all. Thank you, Mayor Given. June 15th, I was interviewed as a part of the RCMP local detachment review, management review. So this is something that comes on a cyclical or periodic basis. So I was pleased to be a part of the, one of the, those interviewed to give them feedback. I attended the Reading University fundraiser luncheon. And of course, I participated in municipal government day. June 16th, Airport Commission meeting. And just a quick note, I think to date, data that we received, there was an 8.4% increase in passenger and traffic over last year, year-to-date compared to last year-to-date. So the trend of increase over last year is continuing. Tender opening of the Dave Bar, tender opening on the 16th as well. June 20th, Aquatera, AGM and reception. June 21, Aboriginal Day proclamation and Roots of Empathy year-end celebration. I was able to bring greetings on behalf of council and thank you to Counselor Wong and Counselor O'Toole for joining me. June 22nd, Shaping Alberta's Future, Premier's Council for Economic Strategy Final Report and Presentation and Discussion sponsored by the Chamber. It's this document. If council or anyone has some, I think, forward-thinking ideas and vision, it's a good read. I think you should take a look at it. Grand Spirit Meeting with Hith Pioneer Home Board. Also on the 22nd, June 23rd, GIS IT Presentation. And then I whipped out to Beaver Lodge Amis Court Expansion Official Opening. June 24th, I attended on behalf of the mayor, the Northern Alberta Mayors and Reeves Caucus in Edmonton. And along with many of council today, I attended the city's slogan and launch this afternoon. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Counselor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I attended GIS Presentation here at City Hall as well and I attended the Joint City-Council Recreation Information Meeting out the County Municipal Government Building. A couple of things they were interested about was our reservoir feasibility project that we're doing right now. They wanted to know where we're at on that and as well, we talked a little bit about upstream on the creek. And we talked about the Bear Lake Watershed Society that is just starting up out in the county. They are, the county is expanding their campgrounds, especially Kleskin Hills. They're putting more RV parking out there, camping out there and and some other campgrounds are tuning up a little bit and adding a few more ATV trails way out there in the county for us city folk to go and enjoy on the weekends and in the evenings. And they were also concerned about the future of the leisure center, wondering what's going on with that when we close it down and jump in the big pool. And aside from that, I just want to remind everybody that who doesn't know that school, this is the last week of school, so the little monsters will be out like crazy on the streets and all over the place. So watch out for them. And I'd also liked everybody to start practicing how to drive without talking on the phone. So it looks like we're going to be in for a change in the near future. So thank you very much, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much councillor Gustafson and councillor Crokin. Would you pick up the next slot there?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Just before I start my report, I have a copy of Homes and Lands in front of me and I'd like to give a copy of this to our Economic Development Officer. I think that I'd like to have him have an option of maybe putting some advertising in here showing the differences about the taxes in the City of Grand Prairie and in the county's widespread magazine. And it's a valuable tool for us explaining a few of the differences of living in the city and enjoying our services and not paying the taxes, but that's another story. On June 15 Municipal Government Day. Hmm, Kevin, get a little drier day next year, would you? You guys all forced me to do some running in the water there and it's a little wet, but it was okay. We got active. Holy lightning did we ever. That was fun. On the 16th, on behalf of council, I attended the Chamber of Commerce Golf Tournament, Bear Creek Golf and Country Club. Got a bit wet, but it was great attendance by the chamber. On the 17th, I attended on behalf of the mayor and council, the Home Builders Association Golf Tournament at the Grand Prairie Golf and Country Club. But bit windy, but okay. On the 21st, I attended the reading of the proclamation by Mayor Given at the Royal Bank Parking Lot for National Aboriginal Day Celebration. That was, that was really good. On the 23rd, I attended GIS Presentation and well, that's quite an eye-opener of what our GIS whole area does for not only the city but all our partners and and Aquaterra is going to find that they've, they've lost a great partner by not picking up our services. On the 23rd, I also attended Open House at the Packrim Hospitality Services. Thanks to Karen. On the 24th, I attended on behalf of Mayor Given and council, the Mayor's Challenge Golf Tournament in Grand Cash and I was alluded to as Bill Crokin. I set them straight because I was just running out of your cards, Mayor. Today, I was happy to attend with the rest of council, the Brand Alliance and Special Board Meeting at Centre 2000. Resourceful Spirit, Growing Opportunity. Thank you, and that's all.
Thanks very much councillor Crokin and councillor Monroe.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I've been away for the last couple of weeks and therefore have nothing to report.
Okay, thanks very much. That was a quick councillor Wong.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. On Wednesday, June 15, I participated in Municipal Government Day at Muscati Park and despite the rain, had a great time. Later that night, I also attended a stakeholder meeting at the Wapiti Nordic Ski Trails for the Wapiti Corridor Society. On Monday, June 20, I attended the Aquaterra AGM at the Best Western. I just wanted to point out that this was the first year of operations where the amended unanimous shareholders agreement was in place. The new USA fixed some of the operational issues that Aquaterra was experiencing in the past and should allow them to be more sustainable in the future while being accountable to its shareholders. And along with those changes included a changeover of the board to retire all elected officials of the City of Grand Prairie, the County of Grand Prairie and the Town of Sexmouth. And the board will now be made up entirely of public members. I want to thank Mayor Given and councillor Rice for their years of service in representing the City of Grand Prairie on the Board of Aquaterra. On Tuesday, June 21, I attended the proclamation reading of National Aboriginal Day. Also attended the Roots of Empathy Celebration at GP Safe Communities. On Wednesday, the 22nd, I was at City Hall for a tender opening. On Thursday and Friday of June 23 and 24, I attended a two-day training session with councillor O'Toole on wetland and riparian theory and policies. Very interesting set of information that we, that we were, were exposed to. Really amazing how some of the policies don't line up and councillor O'Toole will agree with me that sometimes when you, when you look at legislation, when one group makes passes legislation, we were taught how sometimes the other group will pass similar legislation that doesn't quite mesh together. So we, we know that we need to be more careful about that in the future. And hopefully we can pass those concerns on to the provincial government when they start looking at amendments to these policies. On Friday, June 24, I was back at City Hall for another tender opening. Saturday, June 25, I attended with the mayor, a retirement dinner for Stelios Sicilio of the Acropolis. Stelios, after 18 years, is retiring from the business and the business has now changed hands. So we just wanted to say thanks, Stelios, for, for keeping us entertained these many years at your restaurant. You'll be, you'll be missed, although, you know, Stelios is still sticking around Grand Prairie. Finally, on Monday, June 27, I attended a teleconference meeting for the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance.
Okay, thanks very much councillor Wong. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. On June 15, I attended Grade Three Reading University BBQ, Flipping Burgers So Kids Can Flip Pages. As well, I was, my first one, I chaired a municipal government day event that happened that evening in the city, all thanks to everybody in the city that put so much effort into this. And when if you were there, how they moved it all inside the pavilion was pretty amazing, the downpour we were getting into transition from outside to inside. I thought it was quite amazing and I hope to do it next year. So it'll be sunny and I'd like to be really involved with this next year. On June 20, I also attended Aquaterra AGM Meeting, met some of the new board members that are on there and I wish some complete success. Because for taxpayers, it means an awful lot how they proceed and how it all works and if they're going to be increased or decreased or how it's going to work. As well, that evening, I went to Community Future Monthly Evening Meeting and that's why I'm bringing this up because of grants. And I think this idea they have on this of having somebody to help assist in our community with grants of all different levels, I think is really needed and I think this could be a major, good source for the community to know where they can go and actually do this. On June 24th, or 21st, I attended a special city council meeting for the contract on city transit operators. We all know how that came about and are still looking at it and I thought that was very good for the taxpayers that day. As well, that evening, or that day, I attended a barbecue at the National Aboriginal Day Celebration. And I believe it was started in 1996 and I've been at few already. And actually that day, there was an accident in front of the Royal Bank and so I hope everything happened there. I think the pedestrian was hit, so it was good, but I was glad to be there. As well, I attended Camp Little Buffalo BBQ, which takes place August 8 to 12 for 25 to 30 lucky little individuals that get to go to camp and they have someone per five children helping out for the whole day. And I think this is really a good event and I think they're going to have a great time. On June 23, I attended GIS IT Presentation and I really was excited about this. You wouldn't think on computers or anything, but for protecting our data system, we're talking about the internet voting and everything and IMF has been hacked, Sony's been hacked. We've got to be careful and they just get more information on what they're doing for the city and it's, it's a lot. New webpage coming up. New logo. It's going to be very interesting. On June 24, I also attended with Mayor Bill Given with Canadian Federation of Independent Business. I found this very exciting because the fact of 108,000 independent business members are involved in this in Canada, 10,000 in Alberta. And 98% of all businesses are, are under 500 employees in Canada. The employer was 60% of Canadians and produce half of GDP or economic wealth. And we were once again rated number one as the entrepreneurial city in Canada. This is really important. So, you know, resourceful spirit, that's where it all goes. And as well, I attended today with resourceful spirit. Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor McLean. Councillor O'Toole?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just you and me left, eh? Okay, on, on the 14th, I attended the John Howard Society Tabono Year-End Celebration. It's an excellent program that's in place to help the youth that don't quite go through the public or the separate school system. Any issues and it's one of the programs that are in place and there was not necessarily a graduation, but a success celebration. On the 14th, I attended the library meeting. On the 15th, I attended the Grade Three Reading University Program Kickoff and Promotional BBQ, which councillor Kevin McLean had flipped burgers. I would like to commend Linda and Ron decides for this great program that they're involved in. On, later on that day, I attended the municipality day once again and we were able to do some pretty flexible things, I thought, as old people. And we did not too bad, our team. I'd like to thank all the city staff from all the departments for making this a great success. After the uni games, I went in and answered questions pertaining to the 100th anniversary of Grand Prairie in 2014. And we signed up a number of people for our internet Facebook type program. On the 16th, I was joined with my wife. We attended a movie and presentation at the Second Street Theater about it's kind of terrible thing, the topic, but it was human trafficking in Canada. And it was quite interesting. Pretty bizarre that this takes place in a society that we have, but I left there kind of on edge actually. But it was something that needs to be brought up into the open. On the 17th, I attended the Airport Commission Meeting. I opened some tenders on, on that Friday as well. On the 20th, I attended the Aquaterra AGM and met the new board members. On the 21st, I also attended the National Aboriginal Day Celebrations with a number of councillors. And also attended the World's Youngest Teachers Celebration held at the Safe Communities and councillor Lauren Radburn gave mention and words from the mayor on this program. Basically, it's babies are introduced to children in schools with their parents, both in the city and out of the city. 700 students had the ability to be amongst an infant, newborns. This year, they were able to basically deal with building caring and peaceful and a civil society in the classroom by classroom. And it was quite a unique experience and the parents are on board. The teachers just think that they would, they got the greatest thing there. Really keeps the classroom quiet. On the 22nd, we had also mentioned that we went to the Premier's Council for Economic Strategy and there was five themes as mentioned by councillor Radburn as well. It was a very good project that the Premier's got on place. And he's looking for a 30-year program that he's trying to come up with some solutions. I also attended the County and City Joint Recreational Meeting, which was highlighted by councillor Gustafson. On the 23rd and 24th, I also went to the wetland training course and it was, as highlighted by councillor Dan Wong, a very educational, eye-opening experience. And I think with our, as well as some other members of city, I think we've got some good, strong backing for when it comes to putting policies in place. And I think that's something that we're going to be working on is come up with a wetland policy for the new annexation as well as existing areas in Grand Prairie. So look for us in the future.
Okay, thanks very much councillor O'Toole. So I'll go through and try to go through the items fairly quickly, especially that have been mentioned. On Tuesday, the 14th, I had a meeting with a representative of the RCMP to do an interview about our satisfaction with the policing services. Later that day, I attended the Lunchbox Social Fundraiser for Grand Prairie Grief Support. I was auctioned off as a celebrity. I think their definition of celebrity is fairly loose. And I was getting a little concerned when there was a firefighter from the County of Grand Prairie who said, if you bid on me, I'll throw in a ride. I'll come and pick you up in the fire truck. And then somebody else who was with a local technology company said, oh, if you bid on me, I'll throw in a new BlackBerry playbook. And they sort of went along the line. I was like, holy cow, that's tough to compete with. And so I did offer to include a one-month membership to the multiplex when it opens and have to say that I did okay. And I'm sure it was all about the membership to the multiplex. On the, on Wednesday, the 15th, I attended at Shine FM to go on air to speak in endorsement of the Rising Above Social Enterprise, which is an opportunity for homeless or street-involved people to tidy up their resumes and give them some work experience opportunities in a second-hand furniture area. Later that day, I had a meeting with other members of the Aquaterra Board and with Minister of Sustainable Resource Development, Mr. Mel Knight. And then that afternoon, of course, was the Municipal Government Day. And again, I just have to extend my congratulations to councillor McLean and all the staff that were involved. With the rain coming down as hard as it was, it was impressive to see that there was, nobody's spirits were dappened. As I went through the building and saw how packed it was in the pavilion, it was impressive. And then when I realized that into one of the garage bays, they'd managed to squeeze the bouncy castle, I was pretty impressed. It goes to show that we've got some people that really can figure things out. The, the next day, on the 16th, I had a meeting in my office with a delegation from the Canadian Ugandan Cultural Association, Ugandan and Friends Cultural Association. They were here just to let me know that their organization was active in Grand Prairie. And they also wanted to highlight that their association is not just for Ugandans, but also for anyone else in the community who wishes to join. And they're looking to become more active in the community, which I certainly appreciate. On Friday, the 17th, I was down in Calgary for the day to end, to attend at the AUMA Mayor's Caucuses. The day was really focused on hearing from various provincial parties and leadership candidates on their vision for municipalities in the province. We heard from David Swan, the leader of the Alberta Liberal Party, Glenn Taylor, the leader of the Alberta Party. And three candidates for the PC Party, Doug Griffiths, Rick Orman and Alison Redford. And I would say each and every one of them seemed to recognize that there are challenges with municipalities. Each and every one of them seemed to recognize that property taxes really weren't the ideal way to fund the activities that municipalities were doing. And so I think that there's a good opportunity as we get into the PC leadership race and the eventual election that will follow afterwards to really further the municipal agenda and hopefully that's what AUMA will do and as the City of Grand Prairie, I think we should follow suit. Also that day, we reviewed AUMA's strategic plan and some of their priority areas. On Saturday, the 18th, I was back in Grand Prairie and attended at the retirement dinner for Mr. Jim Meager. Jim has been involved in public health, has been known sort of as the food inspector for quite a long time in the community. And it was great to see the recognition that he had and the impact that he had, not just in our community, but really on public safety and public health across the province. There was a lot of recognition from his provincial colleagues for his mentorship and good to see that Jim and his wife are going to be able to pursue their dream now of retiring in Panama. So congratulations to Jim. On, on Monday, the 20th, I attended at, of course, the special board meeting with, special board meeting for Aquaterra. It was my final board meeting as a member of the board and really appreciated the opportunity to serve on the board. I know that Aquaterra is in good hands. Ultimately, the people that we've appointed as our public representatives hold the health of our community and the financial wellbeing in a lot of ways of our community in their hands. But I believe they have all the skills and knowledge that are, that will help them rise to the challenge. On the 21st, I attended, of course, at the, to bring greetings in the proclamation for National Aboriginal Day. And then on Wednesday, the 22nd, in the morning, I attended at my first of two citizenship ceremonies. two citizenship ceremonies that day at GPRC. Uh, I was there to bring greetings on behalf of the city of Grand Prairie to approximately two hundred new Canadians that were sworn in between the two ceremonies. And the uh, list of nationalities really went from uh, from A to Z, everything that you could imagine. And so it was great to see uh, all these people who are choosing to come to Canada and many of them who are choosing to come and reside in Grand Prairie. And so it was a pleasure to be able to be there to bring greetings. Uh, I also attended the, at the uh, Chamber Lunch for the Premier's Council for Economic Strategy and uh, as other council members have noted, I think it's a worthwhile document and I think we'll uh, perhaps refer it to one of the city committees uh, for discussion to see if it's something that council would like to give its endorsement to. Uh, I think it's a high-level, uh, long-range document and, and deserves to have some community discussion around it. Um, on Thursday, the twenty-third, uh, I brought greetings uh, at Muscati Park Pavilion for the city of Grand Prairie New Employee Orientation. Um, and also attended later that day, the uh, GIS IT Presentation and uh, participated with some students here, welcomed some students from Cole Saint Gerard into City Hall and welcomed them as we spoke a little bit about the importance of local government and uh, how it impacted their lives. On Friday, the twenty-fourth, I had the meeting with, as other council members did, with the representative from the Canadian Federation of Independent Business. Um, and on Saturday, the twenty-fifth, I also attended at the uh, goodbye for Stelios Vasilou. Um, I'd also say goodbye to Stelios and thank you very much for his years of uh, making Grand Prairie a more entertaining and better tasting place to live. Uh, but also welcome to the new owners, uh, who are gonna be closing the restaurant for a little while to do some renovations as they, as they open up uh, later on this summer. So it'll be good to see uh, the rejuvenation and revitalization of that restaurant. And then finally, on Sunday, I attended at uh, Muscati Park, uh, to bring greetings to the crowd that was assembled there for the uh, the fun celebrations of National Aboriginal Day. Uh, one item of note that I really appreciated and, and to my knowledge, it was one of the first times, it was one of the first times that I had seen it. Um, they recognized all the Aboriginal students from our region who had completed grade twelve. And if they were uh, First Nations, they received a eagle feather and if they were Métis, they received their sash. And I think it was uh, fantastic to see. We know that um, educational outcomes for Aboriginal students don't necessarily match the rest of the general population. And so I think it's fantastic to see this community recognizing that accomplishment in their uh, in their youth. And then finally, of course, also already mentioned today was the uh, brand launch and uh, thank you again to all council members for attending. Uh, thank you for the public who was involved and thank you to administration who helped uh, work us through that process. And with that, I have nothing else and if there was nothing else, then I would call our meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.